And they were going to put down at any time with a drug conviction. We were, I guess, I don't know if the attorney's order ever said that wasn't on trial, had to be after the ordinance was instituted in the city.
You're telling me that a prior conviction...
Before 2012, but cannot count.
So they're allowed to rent?
Absolutely.
So you're just defeating the purpose of their ordinance?
No.
Yes, you are. If you're gonna allow a convicted felon to rent after this was...
Let's just wonder, what the ordinance says is it's the conviction of a drug charge. That's the conviction of a drug charge. They could've, I don't know, but they could've been convicted of something else. It might've been not a drug charge. So that's why they might've been on probation for something else. What the ordinance, what the ordinance goes after is a tenant that has a drug, is arrested, and then convicted of a felon drug charge after 2012. So anything prior to that, they can't use. That's what, that's what we're trying to say. And it's drug conviction. It's not, it could be, you know, there's all sorts of felonies out there. So that's what he's trying to address.
But the police department is working hand in hand with probation, correct?
We work, we work with them every day.
So then you should know if it was a drug conviction.
Yeah, but that's not stuff we can just go off and discuss.
I know that, I know that. But I'm saying you know, or you should know.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I did start a new business in Sunbury, January 1st, 2015. The bus terminal took its place. I am now the new, I guess Ken Swop was a really nice guy and he repaired and fixed vacuum cleaners and, well, that's what I'm doing now. I fix and repair vacuums in there and, and sell vacuum cleaners, of course. So I'm a new business in town.
Well, welcome, sir. Thank you very much for your investment in our community and good luck. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Larry Wilcox. I'm the president of Fraternal Order of Police up at Wanda Valley Lodge 52. Our lodge covers approximately six counties, 200 officers, over 30 police departments, of which the Sunbury Police Department is one. And I'm here tonight in support of the Sunbury officer. And I would urge council to reconsider the cuts that they made within the department or the cuts that you plan to make in the future. I mean, there's a city ordinance that says that the number of officers in the city of Sunbury should not go under 15. You're already at 11, thinking about cutting it again. That's one of the police department. Now, you know, you have a good man here in Brad. He has citizens of Sunbury to consider as far as their safety. He has his officers to consider as far as their safety. Now, even though he can make schedules and plan very well, there's going to be times when you're gonna have one officer working in the city of Sunbury. When that happens, then you're going to put a burden on the neighboring departments such as North Fumbord, Point Township, Chumoka Dam, Seale's Girl. These officers have to respond through mutual aid, okay? That's going to take their officers away from those jurisdictions to assist yours. Surely, there's gotta be other places that you can cut in your budget to maintain your public safety. I mean, I've been a policeman for 43 years and my municipalities were important to me and the safety of those municipalities. I mean, you have times here, you have murders, you had, when Steve was the chief, you had eight burglaries in two weeks. I mean, you're not exempt from these things happening. And every day, we get information for homeland security, et cetera, that, hey, these threats are coming to the United States. Officers are getting shot. Snipers, they're targeted.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
Did you read our budget already?
Yes, I did.
And where would we make the cuts at?
Well, I personally thought that $588,000 was a bit much for parks and recreation.
I'd be glad to sit down and go over with you. Anytime.
I'll just take you up on this, sir.
Tomorrow morning, 8:00?
Tomorrow morning? No, I have, I have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Glad to go over with you.
Sometime in the next week.
No problem.
I just, I just strongly urge the council to reconsider. You're already down on your staff, okay? That's gonna get one of these guys hurt sooner or later, I'm telling you. It's here. You've got Little League baseball, you've got prison complex, you've got county prisons, you've got things going on that eventually will be targeted, okay? Unfortunately, I hate to say it, but there was plenty of money after 9/11. That money's gone. It's gonna take another 9/11 to bring that back. So please, just reconsider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's something there in defense of Jim's budget. Roughly $150,000 of that budget is for streetlights, not parking rats. What is it, the insurance is roughly $1,000 or something like that? There's like $200,000 some thousand dollars that technically isn't park and recreation that is a scientific, his department. If you wanna get down department for department, my department, the streets department had the highest budget. And, and, and not that I'm, but he always gets a wrap from his high budget. And that's something I discussed with Mr. Shipman, that after the first year, we need to look to pull that stuff out of his budget so it doesn't look like he has a high budget, okay? And then that being said, sir, do you pay taxes in Sunbury?
No, sir.
Somebody raise it, one mill, two mil, let me know.
I'll explain. I'm here to represent the Sunbury Police Department.
Well, I'm just asking you a question.
No, you're not.
You're asking it now, I just wonder how much we put in the bond.
No, sir, no, sir, I don't.
Okay.
But once again, then back...
Does that have anything to do with it?
No, it doesn't.
It's just because the taxpayers were asked us to, to bills.
We have to take answers to taxpayers, first of all, sir. But back to recreation, you want us to just cut all the recreation out? Is that what you want us to do?
No, I didn't say that. No, I said, you gotta look at areas in your budget. And I'm sure there are areas, and none of you, if you're responsible for a certain area, no, you don't wanna see your budget cut. But the bottom line is, is that when the city of Sunbury enacted their ordinance dealing with the number of police departments or department personnel required for the city, I'm sure there were some pretty good people there with pretty good minds that set that amount at 15, okay? Now, you're at 11 and thinking about going to death, okay? And sooner or later, he's the one, okay? Your department is going to be totally reactive. It's not going to be proactive because you won't have enough people. And when it doesn't work, Brad's the one's gonna get chopped because it doesn't work.
We don't need the lectures because that man's sitting there in you since he was born. You think I enjoyed laying him off? You walk into this meeting, give us a lecture. We're all sitting up here, we don't like this.
I walk into this meeting, sir, as a president of Fraternal Order of Police, the lodge in which they're part of, okay? And we as police officers don't like it either.
Well, I can appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm still a homeowner and I don't, we're gonna, our taxes are gonna be high either way. And I'd rather pay more taxes and have police officers that are gonna protect my kids and our future. I'd rather pay them more. Every time I drive by Hawes's or Texas Roadhouse, these people are eating out. They can afford to eat out every night, every Saturday night, every Friday night. You know what? I'm tired of hearing people boo-hooing about taxes. You know, pay your taxes and let's keep these police guys on, on the job and maybe do it a little bit of an increase. It's gonna have to happen. There's no sense of putting us in, you know, there's 10, 11 cops and I'm quite sure we need more. And the drugs are a definite reality. There's just not, not being as rated, we just need more people on the street to turn this, the, the drugs are out there. And, and we need, it's sad when, you know, you, you have to live in this community and knowing that, you know, we're, we're losing cops that are good people that should be on the, you know, on the payroll. I'd rather pay a little bit more taxes and I have two houses now here in Sunbury in business.
All right, thank you. Yes, see your hand back here.
Yeah, I have two things. The streetlights, Front Street.
I'm sorry, name for the record.
My name is Ruth Brille. I live Riverfront. I do not need a nightlight at night. There's too many lights going up Front Street. That's costly. And the other issue that upsets me, I go by and see a police car running with nobody in it for some period of time. That's a waste of gas. I don't know why they run the edges, but it's just a concern, that's all.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Linda DeGroot and we have a business, the Riverview Land Bed and Breakfast, in the house across the street. And I'm with him if my taxes are a lot higher. But at one of the meetings, I think, I don't wanna point a finger, you, somebody said it's $127,000 to keep our police officer?
One of the officers was that much. It was about 260 altogether, 245 in that range.
Okay, I thought somebody said $127,000. Why not run a fundraiser somewhere to raise his salary? Ask for donations. A lot of companies, like the Wise Company, would throw in money, I'm sure, from one of their, their funds, something, you know, to make people feel safe in the city since we're all already cut. You know, that's how I feel as a business owner and a...
Chief, real quick.
I know we're talking about raising bills and taxes and stuff like that. And trust me, it wasn't easy. Tell him, Corey, it was done anyways. But there's a tax, and I don't want him speaking in that line, but there's a tax right now that everybody pays when they come into council, the LSD tax. It's basically the emergency services tax. Everybody pays a dollar a week out of their paycheck. What I'm told is one dollar out of everybody's paycheck to come in, it's like 265,000 roughly, Mr. Shipman, right? Right now, we're trying to get the legislature, which is Linda Culver, we're trying to get Representative Culver, to bring that back up into the, into the state, into the House. If you people really wanna do something, start, Indian Indian here with phone calls is what she needs. She needs letters, public support, because if you think about it, if you raised that tax, $2, $3, people aren't gonna scream and carry on about the $2, $3. And it's been generating a lot more revenue for the city to put back onto the streets, to put back into the emergency services, whether the police department, fire department, EMS. So I would urge citizens to really get in contact with Representative Culver, show support that, that it's a tax that people can, it's better to raise a tax like that than it is property taxes. Property taxes don't raise enough money to help with a lot of the problems in the city. But that LSD tax could save a lot of headaches for the, for the council, for my department, for a lot of other departments. So I would encourage people to really look at contacting Representative Culver. We've all been in contact, or I know the council has, I have, I can urge people, contact or show your support for that tax to get raised. That will help generate more money. We can't raise that tax right now, but, because it's locked in under the law. But if they look at raising that tax, it would solve a lot of problems. So that's my suggestion for the people of Sunbury is to really start getting in contact with her, show support to raise that tax to help the taxpayers of the city on property taxes alone and to keep other departments functioning.
Okay. And that tax is in the House of Representatives right now and it's, I don't know how to go with 2.8, though, they're $2.80. So that would, if, if, it's like the chief said, if you have a chance to write, write Linda, write Senator Gordonner, anybody that's in the state of Pennsylvania, and hopefully, you know, that, that would help out down the road. Yes, sir?
One question. We have a Sunbury webpage. Is there any way that, like, small business like myself, since we started out, is there a way that we can do advertising? Does that generate income for the city? Like, can we, like, you know, it's...
Can you advertise on our webpage?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
No, we tried to get advertisers in our newsletter, we have not been successful in that, but I'm gonna make sure we send you one. And we're gonna print that within the next month and we'll give you the opportunity to advertise.
And you just pay on it?
Yep.
And then, okay, that's, and that, well, anything to generate advertisement.
Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, Carol Mezio. And this is just a suggestion, I mentioned this previously. There are towns that I've been in where they have solar panels on every light pole and they use the solar energy to run their lights and to sell back to the local electric company. Is that something we could look into?
We could look into it, but where would we get the money to do it? We can't even keep Gordon on the job.
There's a lot, well, I know that, but there's supposed to be a lot of grants for green energy these days.
No, there's not. A lot of that's dried up and, and the problem, that's the problem with solar, that's why you don't see a lot of solar energy, because it has such an enormous investment to start with, takes you 25 years in the atmosphere to get your money back. And that's just it, you need, you know, half a million dollars to do some sort of a major project and then you'll get your money back over the course of the next 20 years, but that's not the situation. But, you know, when you talk about solar, it's not need everything Jim looking and trying to get LED lights in and what that saves us. So that kinda stuff, it doesn't work. But it's a good suggestion, but it's the investment in solar that doesn't work.
Is there any way to turn off solar lights on the Front Street? Cause there's a lot of lights on the Front Street.
What happens when you have, when you turn off lights on Front Street, it's just like years ago, the city used to take the major intersection and put lighter bulbs in there for less electricity. Then every time you get a car accident, then you have an issue because did you, did you not have enough light at your intersections? And then we got ourselves a lot of legal issues with that at the same time. Could you turn out some, I'm sure, or some, cause some people complained, I know, to my office, cause banks up a while at times, that type of stuff. But that, that's not gonna make us, if we turned them off, it wouldn't get us...
How about all of them?
Yeah, $100,000.
Three other ones.
Oh, I got one more. I'm sorry, I got one more.
Yes, sir.
These light bulbs right here, I don't know if you know, but they just developed a new LED lights for them, so they're, they're like really, each one of those bulbs are 32 watts. There's probably about, close to 1,000 watts running right now.
Okay. If you came, if you continue to come to our meetings, not to invest in our community, you'll see that, that they're doing that stuff all the time. There's whole buildings that we've changed over, whole red light systems we've changed over, that type of stuff. That's a good point. So on the other hand, yes, sir?
This information that you were talking about, Brad, is that on the city website that people can go to and refer to it?
What information is that?
About the LSD...
The LSD tax.
I thought you said LSD, I wasn't sure. I was like, wait a minute.
I'll clarify, LSD.
Is that on the website that we can refer to?
No, I'm not aware that there's, there's actually a bill. Just, all I'm aware is that the bill is floating around down there. Like I said, I have no idea if it's covered 2.8, but I don't know that it's up for any kind of vote or anything like that.
Do you wish to want a Sunbury website on there?
Well, we put our website, there's no reason we can't put it on there, though.
The title of the tax is Local Services Tax. And it's specifically designed to help cities meet public safety. So it's specifically designed to help cities beat police and fire budgets. It was passed a number of years ago at a dollar. It has never been increased, but it would, it would, saw, just a dollar increase would help us, we would be able to put our next year's budget together with really no problems. And it's one dollar a week, it's not a dollar a day, it's a dollar a week. So I'm sure that Representative Culver and Senator Gordonner are aware, I think probably everybody on council and other folks in city government have all written to support that. Pennsylvania League of Municipalities is supporting that, but if she would hear from some of the citizens, I'm sure that would be a good help. Thank you.
Okay, yes?
Virginia Russell, community activist. Would that dollar tax be for people who are employed in the city?
Yes, only people who work in the city.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Whitena, how many complaints on a property would make it a nuisance property?
How many complaints on a property? Valid complaints?
Complaints, period, yes.
Well, there's, there's unvalid complaints, too. I think it's, there's, there's three, three.
And within what time period?
A year.
All right, so if there's three complaints in a year, then that property is now considered by the code office a nuisance property?
If they're valid complaint, can be considered. Valid is the key word, Mrs. Russell, valid.
And it is, Ms. Russell. I'm not gonna go into it until I start writing all of my proof that I have, but you certainly know that I have complained many times about a tenant, Councilman Isters, and he has yet to be fined.
Every complaint?
And you have yet to, he's still violating a couple of ordinances and...
Every complaint that you gave to our office, we know where it's supposed to go.
You forward where it's supposed to go?
Yes, ma'am.
And what does that mean?
It was forwarded to the police department because it was illegal parking complaints, which we have no authority over.
But why is it said that you have to go through the code office first before it gets to the police department?
No, ma'am, it doesn't say that. Just like, just like the handicap plaque or handicapped thing, it's in our ordinance book, too, but the code office has nothing in that, or the code office itself. It is part of the public works, the police department, and the mayor, but it's in our book of code ordinances.
There's also another ordinance, and I'd like to, I guess, have it clarified. I believe it says something about if a person collects $1 of rent from family or tenant, that that needs a license.
I don't know the number, but I believe that's, you're right, I believe that's true.
I have never heard it.
Yeah, it's, it's, I looked at it when I first came here.
You didn't read or write a number down, right?
No, sir, but I'm just, when I heard what I heard tonight about the different licenses, I was like, whoa, I went and I got all of this, the licenses, the occupancy thing, because I was charging my family rent. And since that ordinance had said if you charge $1, so that's, I just wanted verification.
Some people tell us they don't charge anything.
I know. They're not ours. All right, thank you.
Any other ordinance comment? I think you've used your time up, sir. Five questions is enough for one time.
Okay, that's fine.
Rick, Ed Baker, James Dallius.
A couple months ago, I ran into a gentleman by the name of Ed Baker. It appears that James Dallius, which I guess his perfect name was Ash, was a Civil War veteran and lost his life in the battle of Little Big Horn. And he approached us about a monument or a tombstone for Mr. Dallius. And we were working with the Legion and different places about finding a place to put it. And he approached me again here about two weeks ago and I kinda went on the back burner, but he said he is willing to pay the cost of the tombstone and to have it engraved. But he will not proceed with it until we get the okay from council to do it. And the engraving that would be on it would be, this is, this is the same thing that's on his tombstone at the Little Big Horn. It's Corporal James Dallius, Company, Company A, 7th Calvary, killed June 25th, 1876, Battle of Little Big Horn, born 1851, Sunbury, Pennsylvania. I guess he has the means to acquire the tombstone from the federal museum out there and he has some kind of arrangement with North Coke here from Sunbury to engrave it. And then we will look for a place to put it, somewhere within the city, maybe within the Defense Office area where the cannons are from the Civil War and the Civil War monuments, that, that disended the part. But we're looking for a motion from the city council to go ahead and do this so Mr. Baker can get the tombstone, get it, get it back to us so we can... I wasn't aware of this until he, until he came to me, but it's just a fallen hero from the city of Sunbury, just like, just like our World War I, World War II veterans and whatever, but, and Ali found that, I don't know, but he must've done some good time decisions.
Rick, let me remind, and you didn't know about this, but this was brought up years ago, but the issue is clearly where is it going to go to?
That's what we're gonna look for. I'm not sure the size, if you can find out the size.
Yeah, I think we need to establish that first and then vote that we wanna do it. I think people would support doing it, but we, you know, we're not gonna put it in the middle of the, well, we need to find out where you wanna put it. There's a lot of...
Find the size and find out where it's put. I think that'd be, definitely wanna get it if we can provide a location for it.
So how about let's, let's make our goal to find out the location and bring it all in one time. All right, you guys? I haven't heard yet from the police department. I'm sure I'm ready to hear directly to start some contact negotiations. The contract runs out this year, so I'm sure at some point in time, someone will be on this topic.
As soon as I get the form, sir, we'll get it. We'd like to labor, if it happens, as soon as we can, we're gonna, I think it'd be better for everybody, our side, your side.
Yeah, no problem.
As soon as I get the form, I'll, I'll have it, hopefully, I'm gonna get it to you early next week.
Get that to me. All right, I figured it was coming.
And that's why I'd like to get this started. I'd like to make a motion, we go out, either till the next meeting or the following week, we need to back with a recommendation of an outside firm to help us with the negotiation. I know Rick is new, I'm new, you three have sat into it, but I would feel uncomfortable with going with an outside firm.
And where does that money come from?
We have $25,000 in legal fund that needs to see the budget. Instead of going to the Alphamom, to go to the...
You wanna do it now before we get a letter from them, or what?
I, we're, no, it's coming, and it's either next meeting or...
Yeah, we need, we need to start the issue.
Correct.
We need to start the, we're not, the motion to start the search for a legal counsel for the negotiations and labor, labor lawyers.
So I'd like to make that a form of a motion and we come back with a firm, either next meeting or following week.
I'll second it.
I have a question, are we going to ask our current council to make some recommendations of someone?
We're in trouble.
I think we're gonna go to Thelres for some names. Yeah, I mean, whoever, if the goal is to get as many names as possible, we're gonna just, you know, go for them. So I, I mean, I go with two firms, but I'm sure that you guys know more than that.
All right, so what's the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we have permission to go out and we get a recommendation for a firm.
Well, how many of you guys know firms?
Well, I think what he's trying to say is...
Let's just make a recommendation that we want, you could bring a firm into council in the next month or two.
Okay, I didn't, what I'm saying is we don't know who it is yet.
No, but you're not, but I, I can't see any advantage of five of us calling 10 different firms, trying to figure out who it is.
We're gonna, we're gonna come back to the council with a name, difficult recommendation.
Well, that's my point. Let's put it right, we're gonna come back to the council.
Now, this would be a legal question, do we have to, is this professional services?
But I think a solicitor should bring your name back.
Is this professional?
No.
This is, I think if a lawyer, you know, professional services where you don't need to do a part.
I have to, I'm sorry, I haven't given this word.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, there's been a change in the leadership, and whatever has happened. Obviously, what the council wants to do is your discretion, or the discretion of the council. But we can put that out there that there's been a change in leadership and it is our goal to, to, obviously, to answer whatever, whatever issues our membership has, but at the same time, to take in, like, the events that occurred, especially Officer Zerbi, Austin, Officer Hackman. This should not be an adversarial relationship, so I'd like to put that up on the table if I could, please.
And I, just from past experience, the last time they tried to bring somebody in, it did not work at all in the city, spent over $12,000 for nothing. When it again, sat down with the mayor and I think it was Mr. Schiff and he sat down with Higgin for Mr. Alphamom and worked everything out. I, I don't think that's what you're saying is wrong, but I would suggest you first sit down with them as, as a past negotiator. Sit down with them first and see what they want and see where you, where you guys at. It's when you come to the head and that's where it becomes an issue. I would say do your homework, but I would sit with them first before I do anything.
Well, Brad, the only reason I disagree with you, for some firms, for mistakes made in the past and I was involved in, I don't wanna happen again.
I understand, I'm just saying, I would sit down with them first before a lot of higher employees are gonna spend.
Well, either way, we're gonna pay Alphamom or we're gonna pay another firm. We're gonna pay somebody to do our contract.
Mr. Henry, you can go online to the Bar Association referral and you put in what you're looking for. If you're looking for a negotiator, a labor law, and you will get several names, you can make those phone calls. If you need assistance, I'll be happy to volunteer and come and make those phone calls for you.
We'll get the recommendation. Get back to what you were saying, though, officer. I, I know, that's why I thought the letter would be late because of that change, that's why I figured we could get something a little later because of that new changeover in there.
there, so that's-
Yeah, there's a standard form we use, apparently, and I just have to get it, we'll fill out and get it to you, and we like to put up there, that there's been a change in leadership, and like, not be an adversarial relationship.
And either till we come back next meeting day, or the following meeting? You know, I heard that they had their elections last week, I believe, or the week before?
Yes.
They should have had that letter to us probably by now, anyway, I mean, because that night, everybody knew in town who was white, who got the president, who got the motive. So if everybody in town knew it, you know, we should have had that letter here.
It's on January 12.
It does, not.
Okay, I understand your motion is to compile a list of several attorneys for the, for the possibility of contract. We're not going to make a contract at this point.
No, we're just going to lie or hang back. I think having outside people that have the knowledge is going to be beneficial to the city. A lot of stuff went through this last couple contracts, the last contract, it doesn't benefit the city, and some of it doesn't benefit the police officer. And the legalities of labor law is different than conventional law. I'm not a lawyer, but I spent almost 26 years negotiating with the state as a labor person, and it's best to have outside entities involved, just so you don't have the eager arguments.
All right, so what's the motion, what's the first and the second, what are you written here?
I think-
Did you get it together, John?
I think the motion is that Dale made is that they bring, that they research and bring names of several labor attorneys that we could possibly-
And they is who? All of us?
Well, I think, I think we can, Pellwris, Pellwris, which we're a member of, has labor lawyers, labor lawyers, we can look, we can look in the phone book, we can check the areas, the county has labor lawyers. I think, did you mean us as, us as the pair, Dave?
Yeah. I don't think five of us need to be calling, we won't, we'll offer-
No, 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 there won't be, there won't be.
Let me get recommendations from the Alphamont also.
Reichner?
Yes.